Good morning and welcome, everyone. It is nine oh two. We're going to call this meeting to order. Today is February twenty first, two thousand twenty-three. We would ask folks if you are both willing and able to stand for the invocation followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. The invocation will be delivered by Detective Reverend Charlie Davidson.
All right, if you bow your heads with me. God, I want to thank you for this day and this time that we have and the weather and, God, just everything that you provide to us. And Lord, I thank you for this council. A lot, God, that you've given them a heart to serve and that they're willing to serve this community. And God, I pray through this meeting, I pray as department directors work through their departments, employees work through this great city, God, that we're reminded of James one twenty-two, which says, "Do not merely be listeners of your word, but to do what it says." God, I pray in all that we do, our thoughts, our words, our actions, decisions made by this council, decisions made by directors and employees, God, that we would be examples of your word, that we'd be doers of your word, and we would exemplify you, and we would exemplify your ways. Lord, I pray that you continue to work through this great city. God, in the heartbeat of America, we can be an example, we can be a light to other cities across this nation, across this world. I just lift this time up to you. We pray and ask all this in Jesus' precious and holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Detective Davidson. Madam Clerk.
Approve the minutes of the regular meeting of February fourteenth, two thousand twenty-three.
Has every member had a chance to review the minutes? And if so, is there any discussion on the minutes? If there is no discussion on the minutes, now make a motion that we accept the minutes as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
That motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members shall cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
Public agenda, Karen Cahill, human rights need to be taught in schools.
We're now opening, we're now opening our public agendas section, and is Karen here? Excellent, welcome. If, as you make your way to the front, if you are new to presenting, we ask folks to say their name and their address if they are willing, and also just be mindful of the five-minute time. There will be a countdown clock on your screen. If for some reason you go over, I'll try to give you a bit of a hint. Of course, we will let you complete your thought even if you go over. So welcome, and we thank you for being here, and your time will start as soon as you begin speaking, so.
This is my son, Gary Lynn Cahill. And he's what prompt it is, and Jeff is what prompted me to come here. Actually, the wake-up bell is what prompted me to come here. I'm a human rights consultant certified through the U.S. Institute of Diplomacy and Human Rights in Washington, D.C. And I spoke virtually at this summit in Istanbul, Turkey for disability rights. And, let's see, anyway, the human, okay, all one hundred and ninety-two members of the United Nations have signed on in support of this, of this Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And it's time we start teaching it in our schools. It was my son's idea. And he said that that was something he could really get behind if I wanted to try and get that done, and that people should know how to reach the representatives. Sadly, he had, his life was very tragic. He worked all through the pandemic for the Salvation Army as a custodian, contracted COVID-nineteen two years ago. And this is the candle nut lay. I brought him back from Hawaii when I came back to nurse him back to health, but I couldn't. So I took care of him until he died. He went back to work after getting COVID, but he hadn't recovered yet. And three months and six months later, he was in the hospital for his breathing because of the COVID, long COVID. In March of two thousand twenty-two, he couldn't work anymore. And so, anyway, he got no dis, he got no severance pay from, no unemployment, no COVID relief. TANF only helps people that have children. FEMA lied to us and said that they only had money for funerals, but they were authorized to give him a one-time payment of seven hundred dollars. He received no Social Security. He received no help for being homeless. He received nothing, and he sat penniless and would have died if it wasn't for my mother because he was staying in her basement, her moldy basement. He had type-one diabetes autoimmune also, and so his body couldn't fight off the mold. I even tried crowdfunding and made it very clear and posted the article that talked about how people with autoimmune can't fight off the fungus in a moldy basement, and those are hard to diagnose and often life-threatening. I couldn't even get any help that way. And so, when he, when he got his denial letter, okay, he was on hosp, put on hospice two years ago. This is his certificate up here to go into a nursing home because he was at the point he needed to go into a nursing home. I couldn't even get him into a nursing home. They said the only thing available for him because of his age was Section Eight, and President Biden knew. One of the things up here is a letter from Social Security saying that they got the White House letter that I sent to President Biden, so he knew. You see these hospital dates up here? The list of hospital dates there? They knew how very grave his situation was. And three days before his death, I was at the Social Security Office trying to get him emergency SSI because he was losing the will to live. And the woman who waited on me said, she yelled at me, she said, "They determined he's not disabled." And I was like, "He's dying." And she went, "I'm done." And I knew she was going to call Social, I knew she was going to call security, so I left. And when I got home without any hope for him, I did manage to get a lawyer, but he's like, "No, they're never going to give me anything." He lost all will to live, and he died three days later. And what happened to all the COVID money? What happened to all the money that the president put out for the homeless? What happened? Why, why can't? And I'm thinking that I need to sue Social Security because they knew how grave his situation was. They knew that he needed to go into a nursing home. And I, I just kept being told, well, because of his age, the only thing available is Section Eight. That's not a nursing home. That's not a skilled nursing facility. He'd still be alive if he was in one, if he'd gone into one. I'm not a nurse, and most of my time, I sit going, I don't know what to do. But we cannot just write off this final scene. And human rights need to be taught to all of these people who could have helped and didn't, which is basically everyone. And I wanted you to know his story, and I'll be in Topeka on the second. Thank you. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for sharing your story and for being here, and we're so sorry for your loss.
He mattered.
Of course. Absolutely.
Let me be penniless the last ten months of this life, but lose all wills to live. It's just unconscionable.
Madam Clerk.
Consent agenda items one through twenty-four.
Has every member had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, is there any discussion? If there is no discussion on a consent agenda, then I will make the motion to accept the consent agenda as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, and members shall cast their vote. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
City of Wichita Agreement with Greater Wichita Partnership for Economic Development Services.
Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor. Members of City Council, Mark Elder with the Department of Development, Development Services. The first item before you today is a, the two thousand twenty-three contract for business services with the Greater Wichita Partnership. In two thousand fifteen, the Greater Wichita Partnership was, was established, and what it did, it brought together downtown Wichita, the Greater Wichita Economic Development Coalition, as well as multiple economic development committees and tax, task force, task forces together. But since two thousand fifteen, they've continued to work to support the creation of jobs for the business retention and expansion, company attraction, and entrepreneurship cultivation, as well as working with businesses in the region to attract and keep talent. And they still focus on developing a distinctive quality of place that will attract that talent as well as visitors and growth. In just the last two years, DWP has seen significant results with eighty-eight projects, over two thousand new jobs, ninety-four million dollars in capital investment, over seventy million dollars in annual payroll. The two thousand twenty-three agreement would be to continue the services that they've been providing, including the support for the job creation, business retention, and attraction and entrepreneurship, working with those businesses in the region to attract and keep talent, as well as focusing on developing that distinct quality of place that attracts that talent and visitors and economic growth. The funding for two thousand twenty-three contract is for four hundred thousand dollars annually for three years, but it does allow for two additional two-year extensions on that agreement. Those funds can only be used for like the program and operating costs, you know, including the marketing, advertising, recruitment, expansion, intention of existing businesses, just not for the staffing. With that, the recommendation would be the City Council approve that agreement for Economic Development Services with Greater Wichita Partnership and authorize the necessary signatures. We have representatives from DWP in the audience if you have any questions as well.
Questions for staff? See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this item?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Manager. My name is Jeff Flure, President of the Greater Wichita Partnership at five oh five East Douglas Avenue. This morning, I'm joined with the partnership co-chair Charlie Chandler and also two of our staff, Andrew Nave and Evan Rozell, who both represent economic development partnerships again with the work that we're doing. First of all, on behalf of the partnership board, thank you. You're an incredible partner in what's happening in not only the development of our city, but also our region. It's imperative that these partnerships exist so that we can actually see a lot of opportunities realized, but also cultivate new ones as we work on those. The partnership, as Mark said, was created in two thousand and fifteen. We have seen remarkable results in that time. A lot of that goes back to the fact that we do have these collaborations, these partnerships between the private sector and the public sector. We have a number of strategic initiatives that we're moving forward and seeing great success. We focus in on jobs creation, talent development, and also quality of place. In job creation, you partnered with us back in two thousand and eighteen to develop the regional growth plan. That growth plan lays out strategies, deliberate ones, to see intended outcomes in seven different industry sectors. As Mark has said, in that time period, we have seen over twelve thousand five hundred jobs created, primary jobs, that we literally worked with companies to help create. The company creates it, we just come alongside them to help them to be able to do that. Also, you've seen in capital investment, which I love to see capital investment because that's the built environment that doesn't go away, two-point-six billion since two thousand and fifteen. Also, as far as new annual payroll in the economy, so this is new revenue that individuals and families are realizing, over six hundred million has been generated through companies' expansions and also attractions to our region. In addition to those local expansions, we're seeing attraction to companies, and that's typically a tough thing for a community to do. You're bringing a company into a new environment, but we've had great success, again, working with the city, the county, and the region as a whole, where we've seen Nova Coast, Millennial, Bell Flight, Nomatics, and actually Nomatics, just within this last year, has named Wichita as their world headquarters, which is an incredible company in cybersecurity. As you look at our pipeline, as Mark has said, we have a robust pipeline of possibilities, of opportunities across all industry sectors that can equate to another twelve thousand jobs that we're currently working on. One in particular is the semiconductor business, where we're seeing incredible opportunities in this region and our state, working with Integra, where they could actually be adding about twenty-six hundred jobs, two billion dollars of investment, and then you have a robust supply chain that comes in with that as well. We also know that as you work on these companies as far as their expansions, the attraction, talent is key. How is it we continue to develop that? Again, you partnered with us in the creation of the talent roadmap with Deloitte. We are moving that forward and actually understanding, we know what the jobs of the future are. So now we're working with companies to understand what they're starting to see in the evolution of their workforce, how they're seeing those new jobs emerge, so that we can work with education to make sure we're hitting a very robust pipeline for those jobs to be filled. We're even deliberately working, you've heard a lot of tech industry layoffs lately. So we literally, we have tech jobs here in Wichita in this region. So within the last week, we have literally reached out individually to fifteen hundred people across the country to say, "Our companies have the opportunities for you. Look at Wichita." So now we're evaluating, it's been about two weeks, we're starting to evaluate the responses that we're seeing, again, part of the talent roadmap. I know that Councilmember Tuttle works with childcare. That's a big emphasis that we have to continue to work on as we go forward. How do we create options for people with children so that they can work in the workforce? We're also working with WSU. Remember, last year, the Build Back Better, fifty-one-point-four million dollars was awarded to WSU, and that's really looking at smart manufacturing geared toward the small and mid-sized businesses. Again, the talent roadmap was very vital to that. Lastly, the area I'll touch on is quality of place. Again, as Mark has said, the partnership encompasses downtown to ten counties. Back in, actually, two thousand eight, two thousand nine, again, the city partnered with downtown Wichita to create Project Wichita. That roadmap, in fact, within the last few weeks, you adopted things with the streetscapes coming out of that plan, so that plan is still shaping the future of our city. But we've seen since its adoption in ten, one-point-six billion of investment by the private sector and the public sector in our core. Over a half a billion dollars is in the pipeline, which is the most we've ever had in that pipeline with downtown development. We've actually, with residential units, we have doubled the number of residential units. Fifteen hundred units have been constructed since two thousand and ten. We're in a position to double that again as we go forward. Building a vibrant downtown has also presented us the opportunity on the biomedical campus that's being discussed right now with WSU, KU, WSU Tech. If we had not been working together to build a vibrant downtown with housing options, services as restaurants and things of that nature, I believe that would not be possible in our core. It is today because of the investment that the public sector has made, but also working with the private sector to see that. So we're positioned to see that become a reality as well as we move forward. So in closing, I would just say thank you again for your partnership. We appreciate your favorable consideration of this request before you because it will help us with our initiatives. We want to be more aggressive with what we're doing with talent. We have to be. We have to be developing in the pipeline, but also attracting talent that's not here yet. How do we get them in? You have to be aggressive with that because every city in America has the same issues we have. We're just better, and so we want to make sure that they come into it. The other is, is that the private sector is stepping up as well. If you go back and look at what the private sector was investing in two thousand and fifteen, it was right at a million dollars. This year, it will be two-point-four million. So if you think about your investment of four hundred thousand, we're going to be multiplying it or leveraging it six times to push forward initiatives. As Mark has said, your investment goes into initiatives. How does it push for our strategy? So again, thank you for your consideration of this today. As you heard, our annual meeting, we all build Wichita. It's not one group, it's not one organization, it's collective. And so again, thank you for your partnership to see the great things happening in our city. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Further public input? Input from the public? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this. Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank Jeff and your leadership of your team. When I'm sitting here thinking about since two thousand fifteen, it's really kind of a tale of two eras. From two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty, you know, you guys were out of the box quick and did amazing things, and we were getting ready to soar very high January twenty. And then a couple of things happened that kind of derailed those. You guys stuck to a better plan, and your dedication and your leadership really helped us through a very tough time. So, you know, the numbers that you talked about are amazing. I'm looking forward to the continued great work that the group is doing and enthusiastically support this extension.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. Also, I wanted to thank the Greater Wichita Partnership. Thank you for being here today. We appreciate it. Thank you for all you do in our community and throughout the region. One of my colleagues on county commission says often that we can't cut our way into prosperity. We have to grow our economy, and attracting and retaining new industry and attracting and retaining new talent is paramount to that. So I will be also supportive of this. Thank you for all you do and look forward to many more years of partnership.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. My colleagues read my notes this morning, so I won't repeat all of that, but just want to say thank you for the work that you all do. It's been great working with you. I think you all are doing a wonderful job and looking forward to continuing to support you.
Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then I'll make the motion, but before I do, I do also want to join and thank you for your support of the Wichita economy and partnering not just with us, but with other levels of government and of course, the private sector. According to my notes, we have about fifteen projects that you all have worked on with over a thousand jobs, and eight of those have been in the last two years. My understanding is we have ten economic development projects that I believe are either a billion in capital investment or a million. Is it a billion? Billion, with a B. Billion in capital investment over the last six years with eight of them happening in the last two years, two to three years, which shows that this is not only the perfect time to double down on a strategy that has really taken off the last few years, but also creating a level of security by instead of having you all as a line item on each budget entering a contract so you have that consistency over the next three years. Because we want you to continue to focus on what you guys do best, which is growing our economy. And in doing that, I just happily make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the Agreement for Economic Development Services with the Greater Wichita Partnership and authorize the necessary signatures so that we can continue to have you guys do exactly what you do, which is grow the economy for the next three years. With that, that is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk shall open a roll, and members will cast their votes. I've received seven yay votes. That motion does pass. Thank you all. Madam Clerk.
Business services agreement, small business outreach and support.
Morning.
Good morning again. Mark Elder with Development Services. This contract is for the Wichita Independent Business Association, WIBA. So the city originally contracted in two thousand sixteen to, you know, provide small business outreach as well as training and assistance to smaller businesses in Wichita. In two thousand twenty, the city approved a new contract for services, and what that did, it continued that business outreach, but also created a robust online directory of resources and expanded with three initiatives with WIBA. One is the creation of resource groups. They call those the business life, life groups. They developed and launched business solutions seminars for members and non-members, and they partnered with Wichita Startup Week, and what they have is a startup plus that coordinates with all the different startups and entrepreneurs. So they work closely also with Wichita State University to build relationships for coaching and culture within Wichita startups. The twenty and twenty-three agreement has, those, but it expands a little bit with that. So they're going to take their business solution seminars, take that from four to six this next year, but they're going to continue to increase the number of attendance as well as to demonstrating overall increase in the business health. And we've seen that in the last few years, they've been doing this. And what they do is they identify the fundamentals of the, that the local businesses need assistance with, and that's how they focus those seminars. Their second initiative, this is a new one this year, is a women's leadership alliance expansion. They've been working on this for a while and are ready to go into the next phase of that. So they're going to implement advisory committee to determine at least one new initiative to grow mentor and support female leaders as well as those female business owners, but to continue to collaborate with those female development organizations and launch that new initiative by the end of the year. So with that, the part of their performance will be to assemble that advisory committee, increase the number of attendees that go there, but also they're going to quantify those results and provide success stories. The third initiative they'll be working on is to continue with that startup plus community. They'll begin, and they'll continue with the business coaching curriculum for the startups, and they're going to continue to develop and grow and work with the startup culture that we have in Wichita for any startups that are between six months and three years old. Again, they're going to work to increase that membership of the community as well as providing the seminars to address the common needs that they have seen through that. They'll also be assigning plus partners to work with each of the startups in the community. The two thousand twenty-three agreement will be funding for one hundred thousand dollars annually for one year, and it does allow for a one additional one-year extension on that agreement. With that, the staff does recommend that the City Council approve the one-year two thousand twenty-three business service agreement with WIBA and Wendell Funk with WIBA is here today. Any additional questions as well?
Excellent. Other questions for staff? Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one quick question. We have a couple of groups who do similar things in the, in our community, such as Propel and the Create Campaign. How much, how much work do they do with each other? How much collaboration is there between various groups?
They do collaborate with those groups. I think Wendell can maybe even answer that question a little bit better for you. If you'd like to have him come up and address that.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning. My name is Wendell Funk, and on behalf of myself and our chairperson Denise Hall and our board, we just really appreciate your ongoing support and consideration of this initiative. To your, to your question, one of the things, one of our pillars is really to collaborate and then serve and look for gaps where we can help out that aren't being served. So groups like the startup, everyone in the startup community, from Nextus to Grover Labs to all of the organizations that we can, Wichita State, we work hard to collaborate and support all the efforts for startups and how we can help in that community, help serve business in Wichita. And then we look for gaps, like the startup plus community. There's a lot of resources at the beginning for startups, but then once they get sort of six months to three years down the road, there aren't as many. And that's why we were able to launch the startup plus community to be able to serve there, and we continue to collaborate with all the other startup organizations.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. You guys are doing good work. I just want to make sure all our arrows are being slung in the same direction.
Yeah, I would just say a couple other quick things. You know, because of your support, in the last two years, we have been able to serve the small business community. We have added three hundred member businesses in the last two years. So we're now up to five hundred member businesses and more than a thousand. businesses and more than 1,000 people involved. So now we're able to serve so many more folks. And, you know, because of the history of this initiative and this grant, that really helped keep WEBA alive for a little while and gave us the support to be able to do everything we can to help love on businesses in Wichita. So we have a lot of great small and independent businesses and our membership is now balanced too. We have, we, we, we were very out of balance. We were 80% male, honestly, when I started and didn't have a lot of diversity. Now we're actually 51% female leaders, female business owners. And the startup community, we added 47 just brand new businesses last year. So we've really grown in that and they provided a lot of energy. We were the kickoff event for startup week. So that has made our, our group really vibrant and energetic. And so we're just really pleased to do everything we can to, to help the business community. And we're getting ready as part of that initiative with the WWLA expansion to launch some initiatives to help move women, female leaders forward. So this, this money is really valuable to us and we want to definitely utilize it efficiently and effectively. And we're going to continue to grow. We're off to a great start. We've already had almost 50 new members join this year. So we'd welcome you to come to any and all of our events. We did 48 events, coffee, social, seminars. The learning aspect, addressing the fundamentals of business that small business needs help with is a big focus of ours as well. So really appreciate your consideration and all the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Further input from the public? All right, we'll go ahead and bring discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this item. Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Just wanted to say I appreciate the work that you all have done as well. I know council challenged you a couple of years ago. And since then, you've definitely answered that call. I've been to a few events and have heard some really good things and appreciate you working with those smaller businesses that really need help. So just wanted to say thank you for that.
Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you. I, I know you went first just so we wouldn't, but I, I also want to echo my colleague in thanking Wichita Independent Business Association for everything you do. Almost every business started as a small business, right? And the small business that we have here today may be the next global leader. And small businesses in Wichita are the heart of our economy. And I also just want to say thank you for your expansion with the Women's Leadership Alliance. That's something that's near and dear to my heart and I really appreciate. So wish you continued success and good luck and thank you for the partnership.
Further discussion? All right. Well, before I make the motion, I will also extend a thank you to the work that you do. We know that nationally during the pandemic, one out of six businesses, small businesses closed their doors for good, which is a real troubling sign since nationally the statistics show that 70% of all new jobs are actually coming from small businesses. So it's important in Wichita that we invest not just in the partnership, which we just did. This is the, the group that's bringing in Integra and some of the largest companies we have, but also on the other hand, investing in this initiative, which frankly, a lot of the members are businesses that have been around for maybe six months to two, to two to three years. So the folks who really need that mentoring and that support. So we really appreciate everything you do to take that initiative on. It is part of our economic development overall strategy, which can pretty much be summed up as all the above. So we appreciate you, you all playing that critical role. So with that, I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the one-year 2023 business service agreement. And I will be looking for a second.
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk shall open a roll. Members will cast their vote. Please. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Thank you again. Madam Clerk.
Design concept approval supplemental design agreement number one and funding for improvements to 29th Street North from I-135 to Broadway.
Good morning, Mayor. City Councilmembers Paul Gunsman, Public Works Engineering for the record. This morning, I'm here to present, the first item is 29th Street North from Broadway to I-135. On July 20th, 2021, the city council approved an agreement with Garber to identify traffic, safety and geometric concerns and evaluate projected traffic growth in the area between Broadway, hydraulic, 25th Street and 37th Street North, as shown outlined in blue on the, on the screen. The results of the initial study will then be used to create concepts for accommodating future traffic volumes and improving safety. On January 9th, 2023, the District Six Advisory Board unanimously approved the concept for 29th Street from Broadway to I-135. As we were looking at this project, we did consider growth in the area with Johnson Controls, expansion of Ericcel, Grandike, Conco, Dold and Pearson. The existing section of 29th Street from Broadway to Ohio is a four-lane curved roadway with underground sewer. The proposed concept will expand 29th Street to five lanes from Emporia to I-135. And the intersections of St. Francis and Ohio will be reconstructed with signalization at St. Francis and Ohio. And we'll also signalize the southbound on-off ramp at I-135. Walking from the project from west to east, we continue to work with Pearson there on the north side of Emporia and 29th Street. But their expansion, if you look at the needed turn lanes for their traffic flow and in and out, Ericcel, they're on the northeast corner of 29th and St. Francis. They have an expansion project. We are looking at pavement improvements in that area as well to accommodate where their new approach will be. Looking closer at the intersection of 29th and St. Francis, it is unsignalized now, so we will signalize it. We will add a westbound right turn, turn lane as well and increase the radiuses for truck movement. Continuing going east, the section there between, on 29th, between the ditch and the railroad will remain four lanes through that area. And near 29th Street North in Ohio, Grandike is located to the north off the screen. We also have Dold Foods down at the southwest corner of the intersection. And we have Conco on the northwest corner of the intersection. This intersection is currently signalized. We will replace the signal as well as pavement improvements in the area and as well as some right turn decel lanes as well. For the most part, it'll be five 12-foot lanes through the corridor. And then on Ohio and St. Francis Street, we will have two southbound lanes that are 12-foot and an inbound, northbound lane that will be 16 feet. The I-135 off-ramp, on-ramp is unsignalized at this time. We will replace pavement and signalize that intersection. The existing budget of $150,000 was approved by the city council on July 20th, 2021. The adopted 2023 through 2032 capital improvement program includes $3,350,000 in the ongoing project section for construction. Staff recommends initiating the remaining $3,350,000 for a total of 3.5 million at this time. Funding sources, local sales tax. The project will be returned to city council in the future for approval of final construction funding. And we are anticipating construction to begin in 2024. We have also submitted the intersection of 29th and Broadway to KDOT for consideration of a highway safety improvement program. Those applications were due last week and we did submit that intersection for consideration. At this time, it is recommended that the city council adopt the resolution, approve the design concept supplemental design agreement number one, revise budget and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Blubow.
Mayor, I, I know I've had this question in the past, but always get back to the sales tax and I believe it was like 1985. The sales tax, whenever we implemented it, was it just Kellogg or was it not just Kellogg? Was it all of our major arterials? Do you guys remember offhand what it is? Bob and I know we've had this discussion.
It was, my understanding it was for roads as well.
Mayor, council members. This question's come up a number of times and we did some researches to make sure that we're accurate. The original intent was to put it into road street improvement. That's the, the, the language in the ballot. Most of the discussion was about Kellogg and the council, early councils after the approval of the sales tax, put it into Kellogg. The council, this council or actually some of you on this council made the decision several years ago to then move that towards arterials and bridges. And so that you're seeing that those dollars split between Kellogg improvements where necessary. Some other interstate work, I think the Flyover Bridge, if I remember correctly, was another project we funded with sales tax. And now we're starting to do arterial work with the sales tax. And that's consistent with the language. The county actually is probably a little more liberal in their use of the dollars.
Further, I mean, excuse me, further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? If there's no input from the public, we're bringing discussion back to the bench. Further discussion on this item? If there's no further discussion, the chair recognizes councilmember Ballard as this item resides in District Six.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take staff's recommended action and adopt the resolution, approve, sorry, the design concept supplemental design agreement number one, revise budget and authorize the necessary signatures.
Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll and members shall cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
2023 Bridge Rehabilitation and Repair.
Good morning, Paul Gunsman, Public Works and Engineering for the record again. Next item is funding for bridges rehabilitation and repair. I believe we have the wrong. I apologize. We have the wrong PowerPoint. I will walk through this.
Just wing it.
I'll wing it. That's ours. The adopted 2023 through 2032 capital improvement program includes funding to maintain and make improvements to existing bridges. These improvements will typically be for repairs for rehabilitation of bridges, infrastructure as, as needed to promote safety. Some examples of repair include damaged railing or crash barrier, damaged pedestrian handrails and degraded concrete, expansion joints, substructure deck recovery bridge improvements. Expected projects for the 2023 include First Street Bridge over the Arkansas River, John Mack Bridge over the Arkansas River and the MacArthur Bridge over the MS Mitchell Floodway. The First Street Bridge has some concrete falling underneath. And with these repairs, we can extend the life of that bridge. John Mack Bridge on Broadway south of Pawnee had, there was a fire underneath the bridge. So we were making some repairs to that. And then the MacArthur Bridge between, over the MS Mitchell Floodway, between West Street and Hoover Street, we will be replacing or making repairs to the expansion joint in that area. The adopted 2023 through 2032 capital improvement program includes $500,000 in 2023 for bridge rehabilitation or repair. Funding sources, local sales tax and staff request full budget be initiated at this time. These repairs are based on upon the 2021 bridge inspections, which we do that on a two-year cycle. We will be soliciting for the 2023 funds in the near future so that the, the bridges can be inspected again. Typically those, these report is due, you know, we'll get that back the following year. So these were some of the outcomes of the report and we will be addressing those. At this time, it is recommended to approve the budget, adopt the resolution and authorize the necessary signatures. I will stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. Could you just describe the fire under the John Mack Bridge? Do you have any knowledge as to how it started? Anything like that?
I do not. I apologize. I don't know.
Okay. Appreciate it.
Further questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench for the discussion on this item. If there's no further discussion, then I'll make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the budget and adopt the resolution, authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll. Members shall cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
2023 Community Services Block Grant Application.
Welcome.
Good morning. Good morning, Mayor, Council. My name is Nichelle Williams. I currently work in the Housing Community Service Department under the Director of Sally Stain. I currently oversee the division of the Wichita Cedric County Community Action Partnership. We call it WISCAP, as you can see with a long name, while we shorten it. So before you this morning, I bring to you once again our 2023 Community Service Block Grant Application. Just a little bit quick background on that. The Community Service Development Block Grant is designed to lessen poverty in our communities and we have done a great job with that. We currently are one of the eight programs in the state of Kansas under the Health Department. Well, I should say the Health and Human Services State of Kansas Resource Corporation, which is KHRC. So we allocate eight of those through community action partnerships. And we also partner with several different agencies inside of the city of Wichita to do that. Our quick timeline, December the 22nd, we received guidance from KHRC allowing us to apply for some funding for a new upcoming grant cycle. On February the 29th, we reviewed with our CSB review committee and completed funding recommendations. And I stand before you today on the 21st to review the grant application. And we have a really quick turnaround. So we are submitting that on the 28th. My goal is a few days before. And we are receiving those funds as of April the 1st of 2023. Just a really quick review. Our CSBG review committee includes 12 representatives. Eight is appointed by the council, four is elected via the Neighbor Resource Center, and we currently have four vacancy and we're needing some of you guys' help with those vacancies as well. The committee met on February the 9th, 2023 to review the outcomes and the expenditures. And we're also basing the 2023 recommendations from our committee to apply those grant funds. We've had a great year even with COVID in 2021 as well as within our 2022. And we've had an awesome year and able to provide several different services. As you'll see before you, about 107 of those individuals were employed training. And we were able to provide some jobs to those, you know, and we came before you a couple of times in regards to the emergency assistance. I'm proud to say that we were able to provide 988 emergency assistance services to different people. And that was only through the CARES funding, which was allocated through KHRC at that time. Project Access is one of our great partners and we continue to work with them by providing 607 uninsured eligible individuals with those provided services, prescriptions and medical supplies for those who are uninsured. Employment, as you know, is a really, really big need in our community. And so 51 of those individual family development clients became employed and we currently have data on that. And so 47 of those 51 are still employed to this day. We also have a continued partnership that we're currently working with the summer camp activity, where you're seeing about 180 eligible youth attend those summer camp activity programs. And we provide scholarships to them so that way those parents can continue to work and those kids can have a place, a safe place over the summer to enjoy services. So before you, you see that we have our CSBG review committee recommended $602,041 to our funds for the six staff. We currently have six staff that are currently involved with our services. to our funds for the six staff. We currently have six staff that are currently involved with our services, which will be able to assist two hundred and seventy-five individuals. We're going to continue our partnership that we have with, for the two hundred thousand dollars that we're using with Project Access to provide at least seven hundred of uninsured citizens, continuing our employment training, which is a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars, a little bit roughly over a hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars. And then the fifty thousand dollars provided to our summer camp activities, which will allow a hundred and seventy-five youth ages of six to thirteen to be able to receive those services as well. The Law Department has reviewed and approved the funding agreement as of form. And we are asking and seeking recommendations from the city to approve the twenty twenty-three CSBG grant year application in the amount of one million, forty-three thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixteen cents and authorize the necessary signatures. And I stand for any questions that you may have this morning.
Questions for staff? Could you go back to that number? I had in my notes, one point three million. Is that different than what the grant application is?
The grant application should be the one four.
It looks like Bob's jumping out and so I might got the number from a previous grant, what?
The number that you're picking up includes two hundred thousand dollars in community development block grant funds.
What funds?
Community development block grant funds and to help with the youth employment program.
Wonderful. So leveraging this, these resources with other resources.
Correct, so we receive two hundred thousand dollars leverage so we can provide that TW, TW, summer youth program that we have each summer.
Excellent, that, want to make sure my notes are correct, so thank you for giving me that information.
I was looking back at Sally. Because she always knows her numbers by heart.
She does.
I was a little nervous.
And I wouldn't ask if I didn't have full confidence in our staff knowing these numbers, so.
Exactly.
Is there questions for staff? See none, thank you so much. Is there input from the public on this item? See none, we'll go out and bring discussion back to the bench. Is there further discussion on this item? Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. I just want to say these are wonderful opportunities and we should find a way to promote these a little more. Good stuff we're doing since we always get criticized for everything else. But, you know, we have these good things going on and the people that are being helped and the wonderful job opportunities with the Way to Work Program. Should try to sell that a little more.
Input from a guy who won't retweet my, no, kidding. But it actually brings up a, a, a very good, a, a point. A lot of times we do, do, do have a incredible or very successful program, but it's tough to get that information out, out to folks. I was at a Neighbor Association meeting yesterday and we, we had folks in the crowd who were familiar with our website and talked about how incredible the amount of information on our website is. But it takes a little while to dig into it. You gotta really kind of maneuver it. I know we're making investments when it comes to modernizing our technical outreach to, to folks. But is there, I guess, and I love to chat with you guys, maybe, because I, I know this takes more thought than an off-the-cuff question. But are there other strategies we could be utilizing to get this information out, not just based on, you know, what, what we're doing as a council, but also particularly to folks who might qualify for these type of services but might not know it yet, so.
And that's a great question, Mayor. And I will say that was one of our strategic plans that we worked on as a team is how do we increase our engagement? So we are participating in a lot more community resources, participating in several different schools. Also, we have in, got more involved. We haven't put a lot of that information out when it comes to our summer youth because we tried not to push some of it out because we would rather not have so many of them, turning so many of them down. This year, I will say we did a really big increase in engagement. We work with Megan and Tyler, of course, in communications. And so they got some of that on the social media. We sent that information over to all of the high schools and middle schools this year. And I also participated in their podcast to make sure that engagement as well. And we have two news briefings that are coming up with Lily Woo and another news station over the next upcoming weeks. So we did use that as one of our strategic plans to do some increasing of engagement so more people can be aware of that.
Wonderful, so you, y'all are already on top of it, that's great.
We try.
Further discussion? If there's no further discussion, then I will make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the twenty twenty-three community service block grant funding application and authorize the necessary signatures. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open a roll, members cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does indeed pass. Did we go off the public comment? Yes, okay. Madam Clerk.
DER twenty twenty-two dash nine, amendment to the Wichita Cedric County Unified Zoning Code regarding home occupation daycares.
Morning, Sarah, welcome.
Good morning. That one doesn't quite give me as much time as the zoning cases to get down here, so had to rush. So Scott Wadele from the Planning Department. This item here is a proposed change to the Unified Zoning Code, so we share a zoning code with Wichita and Cedric County. And the recommended action is for the City Council to adopt the amendment to the zoning code. And then there's a lot of other steps that go with that one, but in essence, it's about adopting the change. In terms of existing conditions, you may have seen some of the stories about difficulties in getting spots for childcare and daycare options in our community. These are just some of the articles that are available online. And the Unified Zoning Code has a role in this. The zoning code regulates land uses and daycare general and daycare limited, as well as home occupations are all included and regulated by the zoning code. Daycare general is if you want to take care of more than ten kiddos, then you're going to want to apply for daycare general. Daycare limited is, of course, limited, so it's ten or fewer kids that you'd be taking care of. So I'll take you through a little bit of an explanation on these. So daycare limited, again, it's intended for home occupation. So a daycare that would be operating out of a house. And again, it's limited to no more than ten individuals and that they would be, of course, under the supervision of an adult. In terms of home occupation, so that was daycare limited, home occupations are things, businesses that operate out of someone's home. Zoning code has quite, quite some text about this because we realize and acknowledge that home occupations can have an impact to the neighbors. And in this case, we're talking about a daycare and again, staff are recommending approval as well as the MAPC because we think that that balance in terms of being able to do home occupation and the balance between the impacts that it has on neighbors. And we favor increasing the occupancy for the, the amount of kiddos that can be taken care of at a daycare because we don't feel like that's going to have a substantial disruption on the neighbors. In terms of the effect, daycare limited is allowed by right nearly all zoning districts. Daycare general is, which is more than ten individuals, if it's on residentially zoned property, requires a conditional use. If the house is zoned SF five or SF ten, then daycare limited, you're allowed only one employee. So that's one thing that we're looking at, that's why I bring this up. If a home occupation daycare would like to have additional employees, then what they have to do is apply for a conditional use for that property. So what's being proposed is that daycare limited would be modified to allow up to twelve children that could be taken care of. And also to allow for two employees to work at that home occupation at one time. This, it's, this would bring it in line with KDHE requirements and regulations. KDHE currently would allow, depending on the size of the facility, of the home, and also the age of the children, would allow up to twelve. So in this case, what we find is that our zoning code is more restrictive than the KDHE regulations. So this change would bring it into alignment with KDHE regulations. Also, it's important to note that although it would allow up to twelve pupils, KDHE regulations, depending on size again, and the age of the children, may be more restrictive. So it's not like, it's not that the zoning code automatically ensures that you can get twelve. You have to meet the space requirements and other requirements that KDHE has in place as well. In order to get here, this process of review, we've taken this to MAPC advanced plans. We've taken it to the MAPC itself, all fourteen members, and now we're bringing it to the City Council for consideration. The Planning Commission recommended adopting the changes unanimously. And so here we are presenting in front of you. So again, the recommended action is that the City Council adopt the amendment to the zoning code. There's a number of other steps that are also involved, so we recommend those actions as well. But the primary one is to adopt the, the changes. And without, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? This one, I understand if there isn't an answer off the cuff for this one, but it seems like obviously Wichita is behind state regulations when it comes to matching state regulations. Are we, is it fair to say that we're, at, at this moment, without this change, one of the more restrictive cities in Kansas or comparable cities when it comes to empowering the, these, these childcare home operations to, to take in more, more kids?
Good question. I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how we would compare statewide. But, you know, we simply looked at our regulations, said, whoa, you know, we're more restrictive. Does that cause a health concern or a land use concern? And the answer is, is no. That's been the sentiment that we've received so far from folks.
Okay, interesting. Questions for staff? See none, thank you. Is there input from the public on this item? Good morning and welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, Council. Hi, everybody. I'm Connor Hampton. I'm with Center City Academy. It is going to be a future childcare center downtown at the corner of Topeka and Kellogg at seven eighteen South Topeka. But today I'm here as a childcare advocate. Myself, along with many other childcare leaders, community leaders, City Councilor Becky Tuttle, are working in a work group called the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse and Prevention. Our focus is childcare availability. Our group is working towards increasing the availability of quality, affordable childcare, but we all know that takes time. So thank you to all those members, including City Councilor Becky Tuttle, for all your time and effort to this amazing work. Currently, Cedric County has potentially sixteen thousand children who need childcare. This change today would allow for in-home childcare providers to increase the number of children under their care by two spots. As I mentioned, making a change in childcare takes time. But this change would create immediate impact on the number of children and families who do not have access to childcare. The two additional spots will not impact the quality or the health and safety of those environments. As the rest of the, as, as the rest of Kansas, with a few exceptions, Wichita and some other cities, are already operating under these two additional spots, or operating with these two additional spots. A childcare provider may not choose to utilize the spots all year round during spring, summer, and winter breaks. They may have the opportunity to help out the families that they already serve. They may already have a child under the age of five in their program, so they could hold that additional spot for a sibling or two who may not have a place to go during those breaks. By taking this into consideration and making the change, we will positively impact the families and our home childcare providers, our in-home childcare providers immediately. We'd be supporting our, our community and our economy by helping our parents get back to work. So thank you for your time and thank you to all the community members who are advocates for children and families in Wichita. Thank you all.
Thank you. Further input from the public? Morning, Sarah, welcome.
Good morning, Mayor, and members of the City Council. I'm John Roth with the Wichita Regional Chamber of Commerce at three fifty West Douglas. And last week I was here as well, I think it was Valentine's Day, and I didn't bring any chocolates or anything of that nature. But, and I don't have any today, but let me just say, I'm bringing you greetings that it's a terrific Tuesday and it's a great day to be in Wichita. So if greetings are acceptable, I'm, I'm glad to, to give those. But it is a pleasure to be here today before you to talk about this amendment to the Unified Code for Home Occupation Daycare. I would just, I heard Mr. Hampton already say several of my comments, so I just want to modify what I was going to share with you. But just say, I think we all can relate personally, those of us who have children or those of us who are in the workforce, business owners, et cetera, know the impact that childcare can have on the business community as well as personally to ourselves. And so today we hear about it a lot more routinely about the impact it's having on our workforce. As a matter of fact, I think if I saw some numbers, there are about two hundred ninety-nine daycare providers in a certain category here in the area. So if you take that times an additional two, I believe this is revised adding about two, there's six hundred more kids. And if you take that even by one kid per family, that's more, potentially six hundred more employees perhaps in the workforce. But even if there's an average of three, that's still two hundred more people to the workforce. And so while that may not seem like a lot, it, it's significant to, to the employers here in the community. One of the things that is on our agenda, our state legislative agenda, is an expandable, expanding access to affordable, safe, and high-quality health childcare. And so this is an important work development issue and that's why it's on our agenda. There's also others that we partner with on a joint legislative agenda, including the City of Wichita, Cedric County, the Greater Wichita Partnership, the Workforce Alliance of, Workforce Alliance of South Central Kansas, and Regional Economic Area Partnership on this same issue in our joint legislative agenda. So it's an important topic to all of us. We're also going to be holding a seminar. The chamber is on February twenty-eighth about the childcare tax credits. That's employers can take advantage of to help in this initiative. And this evening, we'll even be in Topeka for our legislative day and this will be a topic of discussion. So I say all that to say it's an important issue to our business community. And we appreciate the effort that's going in to make this amendment. Also want to recognize and thank Councilwoman Becky Tuttle for bringing this to our attention and, and keeping us involved in this critical issue. So I would just sum it up to say that the chamber is encouraging you to support this amendment and know that this is a topic of importance to us and the business community. So thank you for your time and maybe, third time, maybe will be a charm and I'll bring some chocolates or something with me.
We won't hold it against you.
All right.
Thank you. Further input from the public? See none, we'll bring discussion back to the bench. Further discussion? Councilmember Tuttle, I actually plan to recognize you for a motion, so I'm going, if it's, if it's okay, I'm going to jump to Councilmember Johnson for a discussion.
Thanks, Mayor.
Sorry, the tie stunned me, so that was, nice tie, keep going.
Appreciate it. Bob, on this item, this is an awesome opportunity. Will we be reaching out to the folks that we have contact information for to let them know about this change?
Not sure what the staff plan was, but we are now.
All right, thank you.
Bob knows the correct answer to that question. Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Tuttle.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I just have a few people that I need to thank. First of all, the Wichita Coalition for Child Abuse Prevention was mentioned, that was truly the genesis of this. I was on the Early Learning Childcare Workforce Call and heard that Wichita was more restrictive than the state. And so I came back to our awesome team in childcare licensing and spoke with experts. They are truly the content experts in this field. So Adrian Ladd, Tiffany Smith, the entire team have just been very helpful for me and, and given me lots of insight into this world. I also went on two ride-alongs, one to a home childcare facility and to a center facility, which was an amazing experience and probably one of the best things I've done since I've been on council. Because I learned not only how hard our city staff works in this area, but also early learning providers and the amazing job that they do. It was just a great experience and I would encourage my colleagues to do it if you're able. Also, I want to thank Scott Wadele and his team in planning and also Jennifer Magagna in legal. When I came back and said, I don't even know what this ordinance is, can we start working on it? We all pulled together. And then I must also thank Tanya Bullock and all of the early learning providers in our community. Tanya unfortunately couldn't be here today, but she is the CEO of Child Start and really one of the leaders for making sure that our community has exceptional, safe, reliable, and affordable early learning and childcare in our community. And just one quick plug, I know that John mentioned it, but we are having a childcare tax credit webinar next week. This truly is an economic development issue. It's a workforce issue. Almost every meeting I'm going to in the community, we're talking about childcare in some way. So I'm glad that the city So I'm glad that the city can be forward leading and, and really take some steps to this. Not only will it provide more spaces for kiddos, as John mentioned, I also hope that more individuals will become entrepreneurs and small business owners and go into providing early learning and childcare. I met last week with a 23-year-old woman who just opened a childcare facility. She is a small business owner in our community and she's providing an essential service. So with that, I will enthusiastically move that the city council adopt the recommended amendment to the Unified Zoning Code changes and place the ordinance on first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on second reading. Thank you.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open, or all members cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
CON 2022-48, conditional use request in the city to allow 155-foot telecommunication facility with four-foot lightning rod generally located on the north side of West Pawnee Avenue and south of Southwest Boulevard, 3800 West Pawnee Avenue.
Welcome back.
Good morning. Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. Okay, so the applicant here is requesting a conditional use to allow the placement of, as you heard, of a 155-foot tall tower. This would be a monopole and again, a four-foot tall lightning rod. And that comes into play because of the height. This item is being presented today because the DAB and the Planning Commission have slightly different recommendations. They both are for approval, but with different conditions. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated the tower is meant to provide additional wireless coverage in the area. The proposed tower requires a conditional use because it's outside the area authorized for administrative approval. In addition, it also exceeds 150-foot height limit for towers located in this particular zoning district. And it will also require FAA approval as a condition because it exceeds 150-foot height, which is allowed in this area up to that point by the airport hazard zone. In terms of the property, the property is generally located on the north side of Pawnee and near Pawnee and Southwest Boulevard. Property owners plan to lease a 75-foot by 75-foot area. As you can see here on the graphic in the red box, subject site is zoned LI Limited Industrial and developed with warehouse. In terms of the surrounding area, the subject site is located in an area characterized by industrial uses and abuts a railroad line directly on the east. All properties abutting the site are zoned LI Limited Industrial and developed, of course, with a variety of industrial-related uses. The north end, so to the south and east of this location is the north end of the Westport Airport runway. It's located approximately 230 feet southwest of this proposed tower site. That comes into play when we talk about the DAB recommendations. In terms of conformance to plans, we find that the conditional use is in conformance with Community Investments Plans, so the Comprehensive Plan, and the Wireless Communications Master Plan. In terms of review, on January 19th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended approval 11-0, subject to a number of conditions which are identified in the staff report. No members of the public spoke to this application at that hearing. On February 6th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the application and recommended approval 7-0. Again, this one was approval with the same conditions as the MAPC, but with a couple of modifications. The first being that the monopole tower structure must be lit. There was a concern about airplanes and creating a hazard for airplanes and especially the runway. And then the second is that comment should be received from Traffic Engineering to confirm the proposed tower would not conflict with planned improvements to West Pawnee and Southwest Boulevard. And I can confirm that we have had those discussions and review by Public Works Engineering and they've indicated there are no issues with the tower's location and that there, there will have to be some conversation about the drive access for this property, but that it's something that can be worked out. No members of the public spoke at the DAB meeting. No valid protests were received against this application. And also in addition, this item was presented to the Wichita Airport Advisory Board. The board did not have any recommendations at that time. So in terms of recommended actions, it is recommended city council adopt the findings of the MAPC, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading, authorize necessary signatures, and instruct city clerk to publish the ordinance after approval on the second reading. This would be, take four out of seven votes. And again, that's with the conditions that the MAPC recommended. Alternatives include the following. You can override the MAPC recommendation. You can provide alternative findings and deny the zone change. Would require five of seven. Likewise, you can override the MAPC recommendation, adopt the findings of the DAB, and approve the requested zone change with the additional conditions that would require five of seven votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration, which requires a simple majority of four of seven votes. So with that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and maps and then we'll stand for any questions. So here's the site. You can see it right next to the railroad there in Southwest Boulevard. This is the zoning in the area. So all of the surrounding properties are zoned limited industrial. As you can see, the purple color there. This is a map from the Comprehensive Plan showing that new employment is recommended for the area. This is the site plan that was submitted with the application, showing the tower, a location and the access drive. Here's a graphic showing the tower. Protest map, again, no protests were received for this case. And then photos from the site and the area around it. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Vice Mayor Hoheisel.
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like it's to the north and east of any of the planned construction, but can I just get a confirmation? This isn't going to mess with any of the construction we're going to have with Southwest Boulevard and West Street?
Yes, sir. I can confirm that. We exchanged emails with Public Works Engineering. They talked with a consultant and actually got graphics placing this over the, the proposed construction and there, there will be no interference with that, no issues. There will have to be conversations that will take place about the drive and access to this property. But I, I believe that those would have to take place anyway, just given the proximity of this property to the intersection.
Thank you.
Councilmember Booba?
And thank you, Vice Mayor. That was a question actually that I had and my DAB had as well. And we wanted to, and I think we made sure that that was part of our action we looked into. Another thing, I just want to let everybody know that one of our DAB members was a pilot that evidently he said there wasn't a tower north of the airport and they put it, he flew out and he came back and the tower was there and he actually hit the tower. So he was concerned regardless of the FAA regulation that they did illuminate that tower. So that's why that requirement's in there.
Councilmember Johnson?
Thanks, Mayor. This is just a personal issue. But if the council does approve this, can we make sure we keep note of it and where it's at? Because when the changes were made in the legislature, it was alleged that we deny these all the time. And so if it is approved by council in this area, close to the airport, I just want to make sure we keep note of that for future use.
Further questions for staff? See, none, thank you. We'll take, oh, this is MAPC. There is no input from the public. Catching on. With that, as a further discussion on this item, if there is no further discussion, the chair recognizes Councilmember Booba as this resides in District Board.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to take staff's recommended action to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on first reading and authorize necessary signatures and instruct the city clerk to publish the ordinances after approval on the second reading.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open, or all members shall cast their vote. Ever received seven yay votes, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
CON 2022-52, request in the city for a conditional use permit, group residence limited on property zoned SF5, single-family residential district generally located on the west side of South Woodlawn Boulevard and within one-quarter mile north of East Kellogg Drive, 441 South Morningside Drive.
Good morning. Scott Wadel again from the Planning Department. As you heard, this is a conditional use to allow for a group residence limited. This is being presented to you because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations for approval have different conditions and also because there are protests against the application. In terms of the request, the applicant is requesting a conditional use to allow group residence limited on the site. This will allow up to 15 individuals, including staff, to be on the site. The property is currently used for a home plus group home, which allows up to eight residents and two staff. The applicant has indicated they intend to house up to 12 residents and have two staff on the site. The applicant has also indicated that they intend to have an addition placed on the structure in the rear of the house and renovate the house throughout. The staff report provides additional details about the proposed changes and also KDHE regulations for home plus uses. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located on the west side of Woodlawn and within a quarter mile north of Kellogg. Subject site is zoned SF5, single-family residential, and developed with a house that is operated again as a home plus group home. In terms of the context, properties to north, west, and south are zoned SF5, single-family residential district and develop with single-family dwellings. Properties to the east across Woodlawn are single-family residential properties in the city of Eastborough. Additionally, staff have been informed that at least two home plus group homes operate within the neighborhood. In terms of review, on January 19th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended approval, subject to conditions that are identified in the staff report. And that recommendation comes to you with unanimous vote of 12 to 0. Several members of the public spoke in opposition to this application at that public hearing with general concerns regarding negative impacts to property values, increased traffic, and that this type of use is not in character with the surrounding residential neighborhood. On February 6th, the District Advisory Board considered this item and recommended approval, subject to some modified conditions. That recommendation came to you with a vote of five to four. Several members of the public spoke in opposition at that meeting with similar concerns voiced during the MAPC meeting. The additional condition that, or modified condition that DAB is recommending for you is that the conditional use be approved and limited to a maximum of 10 individuals that would be cared for at the site, plus two staff members. So 10 individuals would be cared for, plus two staff members for a total of 12. Multiple project, multiple protest petitions were filed against this application and that totaled 71.1% of the protest area, which exceeds the 20% threshold. Therefore, the request must be approved by a supermajority or six of seven votes. In terms of council action, it is recommended city council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested conditional use, authorize necessary signatures, instruct the clerk to publish the resolution after approval. Again, this will require six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following. You can override the MAPC and approve the conditional use subject to the DAB recommended at conditions. That would require six of seven votes because of the protest. You can override the MAPC, adopt alternative findings and deny the conditional use, which would require five of seven votes. Or as always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, which requires four of seven votes. A quick note about process. City council policies at the public hearing for planning items occurs at the Planning Commission meetings. And according to the policy, the city council does not typically receive public comments on zoning items. With that, I'll take you through some of the graphics and photos. So here's an aerial. The site, of course, is outlined in red. The purple line is the city limits with Eastborough. Here's the zoning map for the area. You can see a single-family residential, SF5 is predominantly the zoning in the area. This is the map from the Comprehensive Plan recommending residential. Here's the site plan that was submitted by the applicant as part of the application process. North, south is to the top. So you can see that an addition proposed expansion would be added to the rear of the house. This is the protest map. Again, the protest totaled 71.1% of the area, requiring a supermajority for approval. Here are photos from the area. This is of the subject site. Surrounding area. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Couple of people on the board. We'll start with Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Due to a personal conflict, I will be recusing myself from discussion and abstaining from today's vote. Therefore, another member of the body would have to make a motion.
Councilmember Hoheisel?
Thank you, Mayor. Now that driveway, who, who all gets to park in a driveway? Who all, who is that accessible to? People visiting the, the, the facility as well as the people who work there?
Yes, sir. Good, good question. Since it's private property, it's up to the property owner about how that gets used. But my understanding is that that is where staff park and I believe they also open that up for visitors.
Thank you.
Further discussion. Councilmember Booba?
Did I hear you say there was two other homes in the area?
Yes, sir. That's my understanding.
And you know what the capacity is on them, similar?
I do not, no, sir.
All right. Further discussion, Councilmember Frye?
Thank you. I'm familiar with this operator. They have a couple of, of these facilities in my district and they are fantastic. They provide a critical need to families that need this type of service for their loved ones. So I understand and have heard these similar concerns from neighbors. They have not bared out. The amount of traffic is very minimal. It's typically family members that visit, no more so than a Thanksgiving dinner. So I'm happy to make a motion if we're ready to proceed with that. Okay. Thank you, sir. I make a motion that we override the MAPC and approve the conditional use subject to the DAB recommended conditions of approval, limiting the number of residents to 10.
Motion has been made. I will second the motion. Motion has been made. This will require six out of seven votes. Clerk will open, or all members will cast their vote. Ever received six yay votes to one abstention, that motion does pass. Madam Clerk?
CON 2022-70, zone change request in the city from TF3, two-family residential district to NR Neighborhood Retail District for retail generally located on the northeast corner of East 21st Street North and North Minneapolis Avenue, 2202 North Minneapolis Avenue.
Good morning again. Scott Wadel from the Planning Department. As you heard, the applicant is requesting rezoning from TF3, so two-family residential to NR Neighborhood Retail. This item is being presented because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are different. In terms of the request, the applicant is requesting the rezoning in order to allow for a retail store to be developed on the site. The applicant has not submitted a site plan or illustrations to show how the site would be developed. In terms of the property, the subject site is 0.17 acres in size. It is generally located, as you can see, at the northeast corner of 21st Street and Minneapolis Avenue. It is currently zoned TF3 and is vacant. Properties to the north, east, and west are zoned TF3, two-family residential district. Properties to the north and east are developed with single-family residential dwellings, while the property to the west across the street is undeveloped. Property to the south is zoned LC Limited Commercial and is developed with a strip mall that includes a clothing store and hair salon. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides details about parking, landscaping, screening, and setbacks. In terms of review, on January 19th, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended approval 11 to 1. Two members of the public spoke in opposition to the requested zone change, citing safety concerns and fear of another shuttered business in the neighborhood. On February 6th, the District Advisory Board reviewed the request and recommended denial 8 to 1. There were concerns from DAB1 members regarding public safety and the character of the neighborhood. Again, two members of the public spoke at the DAB meeting. They expressed similar concerns to those expressed at the MAPC meeting, including the condition of the street that the neighborhood sign that is currently located on the property was, was a concern. uh, was in, was a concern, uh, concerns about theft, and also concerns about the surrounding housing conditions. No protest petitions were received for the requested zone change. The request can be approved by a simple majority. In terms of council action, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, authorize the necessary signatures, and instruct the clerk to publish the ordinance after approval and a second reading. This, again, would require four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change in accordance with the DAB1 recommendation, which would require five of seven votes. Or, as always, you can return the case to the MAPC for additional consideration. This would require four of seven votes. And as always, a quick note, just that it's City Council policy is that the public hearing takes place at the Planning Commission, and that you do not accept public comments at this time. With that, I'll take you through some of the photos and aerials. So here's an aerial showing the site. Shows that it is undeveloped. You can just barely see the, a sign for the neighborhood that's located on the property. Uh, this is the zoning in the area. You can see that it's TF3 up against 21st Street, and then SF5, a little bit further into the neighborhood. Also, a variety of commercial zonings in the area along 21st Street. This is a map from the comprehensive plan, showing that it's recommended for residential use. Here's the map from the 21st Street area plan. Uh, this one also shows that the site is recommended for residential use. A zoom in of that map. This is the protest map. Again, no protests were received on this application. And then photos from the site. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? Councilmember Frye.
Thank you. Scott, could you address what would happen to the northeast Millar sign? Do we have an idea where that would go?
Yes. There, I, I don't have an exact idea about where it would go, but the intention is that it would be relocated. And I believe that that's an agreement that was made between this, uh, with the property owner on that. But that has been a concern, that has come up during the discussions, is what would happen with the sign.
Councilmember Johnson.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, that sign, a few years ago, we've identified three potential locations for it. Um, they've been in talk, well, the former property owner was in talks with the neighborhood. They know if this is approved, they'll have ninety days to, to move it.
Further discussion. See none. With that, the Chair recognizes Councilmember Johnson as this resides in District One.
Thanks, Mayor. Um, we had a lively conversation about this at the District Advisory Board, and when you drive by the, uh, property and look at it, just the size of the property, based upon what the applicant was intending to do, uh, when you consider set, the required setbacks and everything else, uh, that likely would not be, uh, successful. Uh, so with that, and, uh, a few other reasons, I would move to override the MAPC and deny the proposed zone change, because the intended use is not suitable for this residential neighborhood, and it also does not conform to the future land use plan for this area.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk shall open her roll, members will cast their vote. I've received seventy-eight votes. That motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
ZON 2022-71, Zone Change Request In The City From SF5 Single Family Residential District To OW Office Warehouse District, Generally Located On The Northwest Corner Of North Arkansas Avenue And West 38th Street North, 3825 North Arkansas.
Chair recognizes Scott Wadel with the Planning Department.
Thank you, sir. So the applicant here is requesting rezoning, as you heard, from SF5, uh, single-family to OW Office Warehouse District. This item is being presented because the DAB and Planning Commission recommendations are different. In terms of the request, the applicant has indicated they are requesting the rezoning in order to allow for the property to be used for a roofing business. The applicant has not submitted a site plan or illustrations to show how the site would be developed. In terms of the property, the property is zero point seven five acres in size, is located at the northwest corner of Arkansas Avenue and 38th Street. The subject property is zoned SF5 and developed with a vacant, single-family house and a twenty-five-hundred-square-foot garage. In terms of context, the subject site abuts property zoned SF5, single-family, and developed with single-family residences on all sides. Approximately two hundred and twenty feet north of the site, as you can see here on this aerial, is a non-conforming property zoned SF5, single-family residential, and developed with an AT&amp;T warehouse facility. In terms of the staff report, the staff report provides information about landscaping and screening. In terms of review, on January nineteenth, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended approval, eleven to zero, so unanimously, with a protective overlay, which is described in the staff report. Members of the public spoke in opposition to this application at that hearing and expressed concerns regarding the condition and security of the existing property or development on this, on this property, and the impact the proposed use would have on traffic in the area. On February thirteenth, the District Advisory Board heard this item and recommended denial, unanimously, nine, nine to zero. Members of the public spoke in opposition to the application with concerns regarding the condition and security of the property, as well as, uh, the impacts that it would, the development would have on the area. Five valid protests were received on this application. They account for twenty-four point zero five percent of the protest area. Therefore, any vote to approve will require a supermajority or six of seven votes. In terms of council action, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission, approve the requested zone change, place the ordinance on the first reading, and instruct the clerk to publish the ordinance. Requires six of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the Planning Commission, approve alternative findings, and deny the zone change. This would require five of seven votes. Or, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, as always. That would require a simple majority of four of seven votes. And just, again, the same note about process that the public hearing for this item takes place at the Planning Commission meeting. And with that, I'll take you through some of the photos and graphics. So here's the aerial showing the site. You can see the residential houses surrounding it. This is the zoning map. You can see SF5, single-family zoning surrounding it. This is the map from the comprehensive plan recommending residential uses. This is the map from the protest, uh, area, and you can see the areas in red were the, uh, valid protests that were submitted on time. The areas in green are ones that were valid but were filed, uh, late. The red ones account, again, for twenty-four point five, point zero five percent of the area, exceeding the twenty percent threshold. Here are photos of the site. Here you can see the garage that is on the site, as well as the single-family house that is currently vacant. And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Uh, if there is no discussion, see none, then the Chair recognizes Councilmember Ballard as this item resides in District Six.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, thank you, Scott, for the presentation. Uh, we did have quite a robust conversation, um, during the DAB. Several neighbors, uh, showed up and spoke, um, against the, uh, zoning change. So, uh, with that, I move the council, um, override the recommendation of the Planning Commission and deny the requested zone change. In support of this action, I offer the following findings: The proposed zone change, uh, and use will likely result in visual and audio impacts that are not compatible with the homes adjacent to the subject site, and the proposed zone change, um, will have a detrimental impact to the abutting properties.
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Hoheisel. Clerk will open her roll, members cast their vote. I've received seventy-eight votes. That motion does pass. Madam Clerk.
ZON 2022-74 With ZON 2022-54, Zone Change Request In The City From LC Limited Commercial To LI Limited Industrial With A Conditional Use Request To Permit Wrecking And Salvage Use For Tow Yard On Property Located On The East Side Of South Seneca Street Within One Quarter Mile South Of West 55th Street South, 5640 South Seneca Street.
All right. Good morning. Scott Wadel again. Uh, so this item is appearing today because, uh, it is recommended for denial and because the applicant is appealing the dis- recommendation of the Planning Commission. In this case, the applicant is requesting, again, a zone change to limited industrial district and a conditional use to allow for wrecking, salvage, and towing. In addition, they are also, uh, requesting a waiver of the zoning code supplementary use regulation, which, uh, prohibits wrecking, salvage, uh, budding an arterial street. And in this instance, you can see Seneca and arterial street, uh, abuts the property. The applicant is requesting the zoning actions because they have been operating in violation of the zoning code for some time. In terms of the property, the subject site is generally located on the east side of Seneca and south of 55th, as you can see here. The property is zero point seven seven acres in size and is developed currently with wrecking, salvage operation, which you don't see from the aerial, but we have site photos that will show it to you. In terms of the context, uh, to the north, our property is zoned LC and, uh, commercial district, and also an undeveloped vacant parcel. So you can see that they're in a church further to the north. To the east, property is zoned LC and under the same ownership as the applicant's property and part of the larger residential development. And you can see a driveway that gets to there. In between is a single-family residential dwelling that is owned by a separate individual. And further to the south is residential develop, residentially-developed property and vacant property. And properties to the west are zoned LC and undeveloped. Staff report provides additional information about parking, landscaping, and screening that would be required. In terms of review, on January nineteenth, the Planning Commission held the public hearing for this item and recommended denial. On February second, the applicant appealed that decision. On February sixth, the District Advisory Board heard this item and recommended denial, eight to zero. No protest petitions were filed. In terms of council action, it is recommended the City Council adopt the findings of the Planning Commission and deny the requested zone change. This action would require four of seven votes. Alternatives include the following: You can override the Planning Commission recommendation, provide alternative findings, and approve the zone change. That would require also five of seven votes. As always, you can return the case to the Planning Commission for additional consideration, which would require four of seven votes. And again, standard note with this one, uh, the public hearing for this item takes place at the Planning Commission. So with that, I'll take you through some of the photos and graphics. So here's the site. This is the zoning map. You can see that it's zoned LC as well as others around that intersection. This is a map from the comprehensive plan, showing residential that's recommended in the area. This is the map from the South Wichita-Haysville area plan, and it's not pointed out, oh, there it is, there's our arrow, uh, recommending residential at this site. This is the site plan that was submitted by the applicant, showing the parking, garage, and fencing. This is the protest map. This is the photo of the site. So, in the aerial, it didn't show up, uh, but here you can see that a fence has been built. It's partially encloses the, uh, operation, as well as vehicles that are currently parked And with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions for staff? See none. Chair recognizes Councilmember Boobah. Oh, for a question.
Yep, yep. Thanks, Mayor. Can you clarify for me again, why did, um, MAPC approve it the second time? What was, what, what changed?
Oh, sir, um, if I indicated that, I misspoke. They recommended, uh, denial of it.
They recommended denial? Both times, right?
Uh, they've, uh, they've heard it once. Uh, the second action that was taken is that the applicant appealed their decision.
Okay. But the MAPC didn't make a, a second decision?
Correct. They have recommended denial the entire time.
Okay. Um, and, and my District Advisory Board was pretty vocal on this. Eight no vote. I mean, just, just looking at it, I can only imagine, you know, putting, putting that right in, in the middle of a residential area, especially in front of somebody's house. Do we, do we have any, do we know? Was the house built first, or the, or the, or the storage unit was built first? Do we know either way which one came in first?
Uh, if you mean, if you're, well, I can tell you for certain that, um, based on this aerial alone, that the house immediately to the east, the house to the south, uh, were in existence prior to this illegal operation taking place.
Okay, okay, okay. That's what I thought. Thank you. Thanks for clarifying that. I'd like to, um, override the MAPC recommendation, provide alternative findings, and deny the zone change.
So, my Chair recognizes...
I'm sorry. Sorry, I read it wrong.
Yeah, it, no harm, I believe that. Legal, would you like to?
Councilmember, did you have any findings to add to that motion? Did, did you have any findings to add to that motion to support the denial?
If, if I could, I think I may be able to help out. So if you go with the recommended action, it would be that the council adopt the findings of the MAPC and deny the requested zone change.
Okay. Thanks for clarifying that. Yeah, that's what I think was. Yeah, I'd like to make, take staff's recommendation to adopt the findings of the MAPC and approve the request.
And, di- deny in this case.
Deny it. Yep.
Motion has been made, uh, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open her roll, members cast their vote. This vote is to approve the denial. Uh, having received seventy-eight votes, that motion does pass. What's next, Scott? That's it?
That's all for today, sir.
Looking forward to next week. Madam Clerk.
Airport Air Service Consulting Services, Dwight D. Eisenhower National Airport.
Good morning, Mayor. Councilmembers, Jesse Romo here, Director of Airports. Um, here to talk about the Airport Ser- Air Service Consulting Services contract, which is currently with Alavon Pacific. It expires at the end of this month, February twenty-eighth, and, uh, we issued an RFP in October of last year. We received three proposals from the firms Alavon, InterVistas, Crawford, Mil- Murphy and Tilly CMT. We, um, formed a special screening selection committee. Tim Binnell from our Airport Advisory Board, um, a member from the Greater Wichita Partnership, Chamber, uh, REEP, and then some city folks, along, uh, along with some airport staff, were all part of the committee. We interviewed all three firms that had applied, and the selection committee unanimously selected, uh, Alavon due to their qualifications in, um, the service that they provided us in the past, as well as, uh, what they've done with other airports and the record with, uh, getting air service for other airports. The contract is a three-year term with two one-year renewal options, has an annual fee of seventy-five thousand dollars, and this will be funded from the airport operating To give you examples of some of the projects and services that they provide, uh, we have a small community air service development grant that is from the United States Department of Transportation. We're anticipating that program actually will, um, they've had some recent, uh, rule changes, and we anticipate that they're going to have a call for, uh, grant applications soon, and it has typically a six-week turnaround, and so there's a short timeline that we work with, with the consultant to help us prepare for grants of that nature. Uh, they also do business cases for airlines. This is when we make adjustments and pitches to airlines for, uh, air service. Uh, for instance, Southwest has service from Wichita to, uh, certain, uh, places in, on the east coast, as well as, uh, Baltimore. And if we can get to the DC area with better connectivity through St. Louis, we make a case to them, say, hey, you know, here's, here's the data, here's the flight availabilities. Hopefully, you can adjust some of the times. The air service consultant actually helps us prepare those studies and presentations. Uh, they also do leakage studies for us. That's when we look at what is our market doing, our market area, our catchment area, uh, where are they going and why? What other service are they seeking? And, uh, they give us, uh, good representation at airline conferences. Uh, they conduct virtual meetings with us regularly, and they also do in-person meetings with us, whether it's here in Wichita or at airlines headquarters. So they play, play a very valuable role in the development of air service. It is the recommendation that the Wichita Board, Authority approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures, but I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for staff?
Excuse me.
See none. Thank you. Is there input from the public on this one? See none. We'll bring discussion back to the bench. Uh, I guess we'll open up to discussion, although, uh, Jesse, I actually do have a question, although I want to go back to questions. Uh... I, I know that when we look at our economic development strategy, having direct flights from Wichita to the coast are very important. Can you tell us a bit on some of the progress that has been made, at the very least getting us to, to the west coast with a direct flight?
Right now, we do have service to LAX, but it is seasonal and provided by Allegiant. We do want to see that, um, have a regularly scheduled flight, also to the Bay Area. And there's a couple of different places on the east coast. And so we know that we have some gaps and openings for air service. We also know that with economic development continuing to occur, that workforce, you know, needs to have connections for local businesses to grow. So we're trying our best in, in, in making headway with airlines. It's a pretty competitive market right now. Airlines are looking for minimum revenue guarantees. They have less pilots, less aircraft, less resources. And so what we're seeing, um, you know, for growth is them transitioning to larger airplanes as opposed to you getting more flights. So they're being pretty diligent about their decision-making. So, um, as I mentioned before, you know, if a grant like a SCASD becomes available and it's good for us to get to the east or west coast, we're going to, we're going to go after that, and, and we'll have to move pretty quickly.
And just, just because I'm interested, if you could pick the next city, if you had the complete control, could pick the next city for us to have direct flights to, what would it be?
Well, you know, I, I must admit my bias, since I'm originally from LA and I still have family there. And I would love to see the connectivity to Los Angeles. However, I, I've heard our community say that we need the direct connectivity to DC, and in particular, DCA, Reagan National. So I think that would be our number-one target that we'd be going after next.
Excellent. And I did connect the, the dots with, with, uh, LAX and thought maybe that was your, your doing, getting us, and get back, get mom back and forth, I guess, during holidays. So we appreciate all your work. Thank you for that. Is there any, I don't think there's any further questions for you. That was, thank you. Further discussion? If there is no further discussion, then I make the motion to accept staff's recommended action to approve the contract and authorize the necessary signatures. And I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. I've received seventy-eight votes. That motion does indeed pass. Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Appointments and Comments.
All right. Let's start with appointments, if that, if that's okay. Are there any appointments at this time? See none? Let's go ahead and roll right into, uh, comments or discussion for the good of the group? Councilmember Boobah.
Just one comment before Jesse leaves. I really thought he would have said Manhattan.
The, um, that caught me off guard. Further comments? All right. If there are no further comments, then I would make the motion that the City Council recess into executive session for fifteen minutes to receive information on a civic action pursuant to KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B two for pending litigation, legal advice, or legal consultation with the city attorney, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney-client relationship about pending litigation, legal advice. The executive session is required to protect the attorney-client privilege and the public interest. We will start that at eleven o'clock. And it, we will reconvene back in this chamber at eleven fifteen if this motion passes. That is the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded by Vice Mayor Hoheisel. Clerk will open her role. Members cast their vote. I've received seventy-eight votes. We, motion passes. We will be in executive session at eleven o'clock. Again, we will meet back here at eleven fifteen. Thank you.